All right, I'll call this to order at six thirty-two. Start with the roll call. Joel?
I'm here.
Leah?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Sarah is not able to join us tonight. Tom?
I'm here.
Carly?
Here.
Myself and Dr. Slernow. Is this meeting been properly noticed? Yes. Excellent. I'd ask we all rise to say the pledge.
Let my divisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a volunteer to read our mission statement?
Again. The Mount Horvath area school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfill members of society.
Thanks Carly. Item two is our agenda and minutes approval. Do we have any motions to approve or revise any of the agenda or the minutes?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The B, let's try to separate those out. Approval of our June two regular board and executive meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Joel, second by Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item three addressing the board. Any citizen comments? Any signups tonight, Dr. Slernow?
Didn't see anybody, but we're grateful to have our friends from the local P flag with us again. Thank you for your continued support of our young people in the district.
Thank you for your continued support as well.
Great. And on to three B, school news. Dr. Slernow, do you want to?
Well, boy, we sure had a great commencement ceremony back a couple of weeks ago. Last Sunday, actually. Just some lovely, lovely presentations from students as well as the staff and Board President Mertz. Thank you for that. We finished school on Wednesday of this past week and wouldn't you know it, the kids were back to school today for summer school. Round one will go this week and next. There'll be a bit of a reprieve during the week of, what would that be, June twenty or June thirtieth-ish? Somewhere in there because of July fourth follows on that Friday. So families can maybe break away for the holidays. And then we'll have our second run at summer school. I want to commend a couple of people for their outstanding efforts. First, I'd like to commend Katie Hardiman, who you may know as our Dean of Students at the Early Learning Center. Jessie Miet. Jessie is our administrative assistant to Dr. Straka. Dr. Straka, of course, thank you for your outstanding leadership. Who else am I forgetting? Oh, Courtney Harland. Mrs. Harland, second grade teacher. She is going back to school to get her administrative license and kind of a school within a school opportunity for her to demonstrate her leadership. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I might. How many students would you guess are actually helping us out? The high school students who are?
Oh, that's a harder number. I'd say probably thirty to forty.
It was really impressive this morning. Many kids, high school students getting up. You'd think they'd be wanting to sleep in, yet they're out there helping us out and we couldn't do it without them as well. So really a good start to the summer. And speaking of summer, I'm excited about the baseball night. The Madison Mallards will be hosting the Green Bay Rockers this Sunday afternoon at four oh five. I think is the first pitch. And you'd be asking yourself, well, why is he telling us about this? Well, this happens to be Mount Horvath night and thanks to the good work of Aubrey Hanks and in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, we, I think, have well over nine hundred people who've signed up for tickets to this event. And I saw on the TV last night that they're giving out bobbleheads, Channel twenty-seven. So get yours early. And then I also want to kind of plant the seed with a little bit of exciting news. It's been about maybe seven or eight years since we've updated our school district's website. And we're in the throes of putting the finishing touches on that. We look to launch that sometime this summer and I think you're going to be very pleased with not only the aesthetics, but how much easier it will be to find information that people are wanting to find. So we'll continue to keep you posted on that.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Slernow. Anyone else with any school news they want to share?
I wanted to give an update. You may have heard that the Joint Finance Committee met last week and finalized their budget proposal. We've got a lot of discussions here about our budget needs and asks and advocacy. And so I thought I would give an update on where they landed on some of those items. Overall, their proposal for education was underwhelming and didn't come close to anything that we asked for. That's the short story of it. Particularly in special education reimbursement is a reminder. We asked for, not only us, but coordinated with the Dean County Consortium, with state, with school boards across the state, an increase to special education reimbursement rate of a guaranteed sixty percent. They are going to, their proposal is to take it from the estimated thirty-three to an estimated thirty-five. So far from, in the first year, and an estimated thirty-seven in the second year. And as we all know, those estimated months never come to fruition and our thirty-three percent estimate from last year came in at, was it twenty-nine, thirty? This year. So any increase is something, is good, but falls far short of our needs. They instead, as we talked about before, focused on recommending an increase of up to ninety percent of high-cost special education, which is a category, a very specialized category. It's very small, not even applicable to every school in the state. And my understanding is not even applicable to us, including us in this past year. So the legislature may tout that as having done something, but the material impact is minimal to nothing for us. They also, on general aid, which is what balances property taxes, they did not increase, pass any kind of increase to the revenue limit. We still have the three twenty-five revenue limit increase from Governor Evers. However, by not increasing general aid at all in their proposal, they are guaranteeing that that will fall on property taxpayers instead. And then the last thing, there's, there's all, like, if you go to the WASB website, I would encourage you to go, they have a good summary of everything in there. So feel, you know, feel free to go and look at the other details. The other thing that I would point out is that the fifty million dollar literacy funding from Act Twenty, the governor proposed to reallocate that in this fiscal year. They did not. So the budget's not final. I guess I will, as a personal auditorial, say that they did, the package does include one point six billion dollars of tax cuts. And it's, they, I think a lot of their reasoning for not increasing budget and, you know, and as this was, well, excuse me, as we know, there's about a four billion dollar surplus right now. A lot of their continued reasoning for not spending into that surplus is that it's not a structural surplus, it's a one-time surplus. Yet they managed to put in one point six billion dollars of tax cuts. The budget's not final. Still has to go through the entire legislature. Still has to potentially be passed or vetoed by the governor. And so I would encourage anyone who's an advocate to our education to let Representative Novak and Senator Mark Klein or whoever your representative is, if you live in a few cross lines in the district, to reach out to your representatives.
Can I just add one? I have a budget. Also a cut of ten million dollars in revenue funding. And we get a lot of grant funding for it at the health services. So that's alarming.
There's some talk that perhaps, I don't know what the, it's so far from what the governor asked for. There's some theorizing that he might get enough pressure to just veto the whole budget. We'll have to see how other aspects play out there. But yeah, that's where we are.
High school news, it's not, it's dreary. Our FFA kids are in Canada.
That's right.
They made it late Saturday, Sunday night into Canada. So now they're cellphone-free until sometime Saturday or Sunday. It's a very exciting trip.
I'll add, the middle schoolers put on a musical the last day of school.
Oh, yeah.
And that was entertaining. They did a nice job to be out of school and still willing to participate in something like that. It's dedication to our, not only our staff, but the kids that participated. And then just a big shout out to all the spring sports that finished up at the end of the year and basically were going up to the last day and competed strongly.
That's great. Thanks, Tom. Anyone else with any school news? All right. Appreciate it. Let's move on to item four, personnel transactions. Dr. Slernow, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah.
I may have a special guest in attendance to want to introduce.
We have a couple of bits of great news. First, as you might have seen, board members, there is an addendum to our employment recommendations. You may have seen a bit of a change that will occur at our intermediate center office as two of our longstanding administrative assistants are preparing to go out together, one into retirement and one into a new opportunity for themselves. And some recommendations of some names maybe you even know as they've just been wonderful community members here in Mount Horvath for some time. So we're eager to welcome them. And then one that I know that has garnered a great deal of interest because it's such an important position in our district is our new activities manager. And I'm going to ask Mr. Carr if he'd be willing to come on down and say hello to everyone. Everyone, welcome to Mr. Chris Carr. Chris is going to fill the role pending your approval. A new position that we're calling activities manager. We're trying to utilize some savings in anticipation of next year's budget reductions and allow for the focus to be solely on activities and on athletics. Mr. Carr's background is so amazing. He has a bachelor's degree from UW Platteville where he studied physical education and health.
Yep.
Used that to teach in both Monroe as well as Mineral Point School Districts. And then because, you know, you're not busy enough, you've decided to go back and get your master's degree.
Yep.
And did I see masters of public at Health Administration with an emphasis on?
Sports administration.
Sports administration.
Yep.
Wow. And when will you be done with that?
Yeah, so after this summer concludes, I'll have, I think it's up to twelve out of my thirty credits completes, about halfway.
Outstanding. Good for you.
Grinding over the summer and some other seasons here and trying to get as much done as I can.
To a T. Everybody with whom we spoke, both in reference checks, but then all of the coaches and parents who participated in the interview committees just were so impressed by your level of energy and your excitement level in terms of, I hear you're already thinking about ways in which to even get us to electronic ticketing in our district.
Yep.
I just have such great hope for your leadership. And tell us a little bit more about yourself, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I grew up in Darlington, Wisconsin. And first of all, thank you for having me here today. I'm really excited to be here. I've been looking forward to this for a while. So I grew up in Darlington, Wisconsin. I was a three-sport athlete then. And during that time is kind of when, you know, with various clubs and activities, I had a lot of interest in putting myself out there and doing things. And, you know, I got into teaching and I just loved the atmosphere within a high school and a middle school. And so then, you know, I taught and I just wanted a little bit more. And so I wanted that athletic administration. And so I went back to Mineral Point because they, that's where I did my student teaching. And so when I completed my student teaching, I had great relationships there. And then so I was, you know, I was very happy at Monroe. I had no reason to leave. And all of a sudden, I had somebody reach out to me from Mineral Point saying, hey, they're combining the A.D. and the Phi Ed, which you're both obviously qualified for, and we really want you to be the one to take it. And so, you know, I threw my name in and obviously I had some good relationships over there. So that's where I've been since. And we've had some really, really successful programs and, you know, some unforgettable years for me over there. So, you know, that part, it's a little, you know, it's always, it's never easy to leave, especially all the great relationships that I formed over there. But, you know, when this came open, it was, you know, it was your quote-unquote "dream" job that I've talked to my wife about. We drive by all the time and I'm like, if something ever were to open up in Mount Horvath, I would be, you know, chomping at the bit to get in. So, you know, I went ahead and did that. And, you know, I appreciate everybody and the time it took for the whole interview process. And it was planned out very well. And you had different stations moving all throughout the whole day. And, you know, it went very, very smooth. So I appreciate, you know, everybody's time that went into that. And I could not be more excited to get started, so.
We're so grateful that you would take time to meet our Board of Education tonight.
Yes.
By the way, notice he's already wearing something from the fall fashion line here at Mount Horvath. And come by education honestly in that your wife is also a educator as well and?
Yes. Yep, so I've got a soft spot a little bit for the music department because my wife is a choir director over at Broadhead, that school district. So, you know, I'm really excited. I know we've got some great music programs here as well. So excited to get in touch with them and see how we can keep things moving forward with them as well, so.
Well, thank you for being here today.
Absolutely. Again, nice to meet everybody. Thank you guys for having me here.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you, Board, for considering these recommendations this evening.
Excellent. Yep, do we have a motion to approve or any further discussion on the personnel?
I mean, I heard Darlington.
Motion. Oh, go ahead.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Joel, second by Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Next up, our consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve in full or pull out any of these individual items for discussion?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Carly, second by Leah. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We'll move forward on to discussion items. Six A, we've got the committee and village liaison member reports. First up, Carly, I don't know if you have some more to add from Cali?
Nothing. Our last meeting, we've seen everything that's come out of this committee come before the full board. Our last meeting was a brief abbreviated meeting to give the final touches to the two letters that were approved last meeting. That's it. And we don't have anything currently on the books for a future meeting at this time.
Okay. Good to know. Jessica, education.
We met on Monday, June second, and we were fortunate enough to have several teachers come in to present to us from the CK LA. It was kindergarten through fifth grade plus the reading specialist. It was fantastic. It was almost the entire hour. They shared what was successful, a few challenges. Some of the older teachers, well, the teachers of older students are anxious for the students that will get to them that have gone through CK LA in the previous years. And then we very briefly discussed the academic standards. There's no changes from the previous year. And our next meeting is July seventh.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, conversations about Jessica's report? Excellent. Community Coalition.
We meet in July.
In July, great. And Village of Mount Horvath, that's me. Don't have a whole lot to report, but I did touch base with Village President Ryan Suzuski today and our liaison from the board, Nate Auger. And just expression of appreciation for our continued path toward more communication, open communication. First about the uses of the Luckin property for recreation. And then ongoing discussions with the facility plans, with student safety and general community involvement. The one thing that did come up was that they don't have any youth and government students yet for next year. And they're going to focus on that in September. But if there's anyone out there who has a child who wants to contribute to that, I know I can give the parental testimonial. I have both kids go through that role. And it was, it's one of those things where, yeah, you sit through a lot of meetings and a lot of things you're maybe not that familiar with, but it's a great experience and to understand how things work and also to see what happens in Mount Horvath. And it's a great career resume builder. So I'll throw that out there for everyone's sake. Excellent. Six B, long-range facility planning.
Mr. President, it looks like our speaker isn't quite on the line yet. Would it be okay if we introduced Sarah Straka?
Absolutely. Sarah Straka, you ready?
Yeah.
Great. Get the information and advocacy report. Life-ready indicators, four K through grade twelve.
So this report is on my typical goal. The report was on learning and growth, looking at that academic development and the life-ready indicators that are connected to preparing our students for citizenship. The first is looking at silver cord. We actually had a really good discussion, I think, back when we made this power goal, thinking about students and their service to the community. And one way we've been tracking this at the high school level is through the silver cord hours. We did see an increase this year, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, where about a quarter of our seniors were able to graduate with silver cord hours, which is an increase that we haven't really seen since before COVID. So we're seeing a rebound in students who are getting to that hundred forty-hour mark, which is where they receive a silver cord hour number or higher. Within the report, I did indicate though that as I have, I think, started last year, that we do have students who commit, who complete some hours. So we did have thirty-one students complete hours with a range from one hour to a hundred and twenty hours. So there was, and again, these are documented hours. There's probably kids doing a lot of great things. They just might not get the paperwork, which, you know, that's just part of their growth and work skill, right, getting paperwork done. None of us like that. So we can maybe do a better job advertising that and thinking of ways for students to submit that. But I bet a higher percentage of kids are getting that number. But of the numbers we receive, it's nice to have that. We've also been breaking it down thus far by gender because that was a glaring area where females have been, have had a higher percentage of completing the silver cord hours. And again, from last school year into school year, it's still the case. So we'll keep working on getting the males out there and really trying to diversify our groups. I know as Dr. Slernow can attest to with Club Interact, you have five males?
Five old males.
Out of what, forty sometimes?
Sixty-five kids.
Sixty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you have to tell the females?
You gotta get more. Yeah, that's right.
Find someone to bring along.
That's right.
It's a, as a rule, it's still kind of our way of. I know Cody Lundquist is going to be potentially sharing more information with us and with the board about, like, massaging silver cord a little bit? Maybe widening what constitutes club hours. But he's been thinking through that. He's going to hopefully by the end of the summer bring some more information to us and just brainstorm ways to get kids more involved and to recognize the work kids are doing.
I wonder if there's a way to gather, like, student testimonials from the male students about why they did it, what they did?
My mom made me do it.
Well, possibly that. Or like why it's useful. Hey, I put this on this application. You know what I mean? I don't know. Because the adults in the room saying, why aren't you doing it? You should, isn't very helpful.
Yeah.
Well, and I've talked to a few kids, like some of the soccer kids who helped with the little soccer camp. They're like, I didn't know I could do silver cord. And they're like, it's too late now. And I'm like, no, it's not. Yes, you did it last summer, but you were still in high school. You can take it, ask the coach to sign it. We can? I'm like, yeah.
Even the number of students who are participating, helping out with summer school. I was pleased to see there was a little bit more male representation.
And there has been a pretty even split at summer school.
Yes.
It's just not transferring. So we'll have to figure that out because each year we can have some kids return over and over and that's twenty to forty hours right there.
Yes.
So maybe I can ask Courtney Harland to just mention to the kids, or put a little sign next to the sign-in table, just remind them I have their silver cord sheet there that they can turn in.
One thing that would be helpful too is you can see like the silver cord, but not what it, what?
Like a percentage or something like that?
Yeah, it, yes. But if you could see like what you turned in versus what you didn't. Because finding them at the bottom of backpacks, I'm like, is this a duplicate? This is not my problem. So, you know, it might be nice if they could look in and be like, oh yeah, I forgot to do this thing. I know it says keep track of it on your own, but we keep track of everything else in admitted campus. I can't imagine too difficult to even just have pull up a scanned image or something of what you turned in.
Yeah, we can talk to our school counseling department on that. Okay. Thank you.
I wonder if class organized activities, and I don't know how prevalent this is. I know that Social Problems does, like, a part of their grade. They do hours and I don't know if those, if there's a coordinated effort to track those hours or if there are other classes that do those kind of things and how that plays into this as well.
Depending on your age, those don't. So like, I had a senior who did that for class, but it's after the due date for when it's due for silver cord. So then he couldn't use them for silver cord because that date had already passed.
Yeah.
So.
I guess, yeah, my wider question is just more like those activities that we know are, and I know, just like you said, there's stuff going on that we're not tracking, that we don't have as easy access to. I just, I guess I wonder how much of that is stuff that is school-generated otherwise.
Good question.
Would it make sense to use some time in staff at the beginning of the freshman year to talk a little bit about what it means? I'm sure we do some, but?
I'm sure, yeah. Just reminders.
So we can be just a minute or so, okay? Thanks, bud.
Or even at the beginning of every semester.
Well, every semester.
Yeah. And Sarah, I know we've discussed this before about,
Yeah, I'm sure. I know we've discussed this before about, you know, I mean, there's like bandwidth on what we can all do and focus on silver, silver cord or other programs or whatever else it is. But it does seem like something that we keep coming back to and gravitating.
Yeah.
At an interest level and maybe, um, you know, automating some of that, sign up genius, whatever else it is. Like advertising opportunities a little easier, sign offs easier, that type of thing, whether that's now or down the road.
I know Cody was looking into a program for other things and he had mentioned that that could be a possibility. So.
Yeah.
I don't think he's quite there yet, but maybe the department's updates.
Maybe we can make the cords real silver.
Then we're just like paying them.
Yeah.
That I do, I mean, I, as I looked at this, I was just trying to think like, I know we've seen the, the disparity and discrepancy in that stat before for a while. And I was trying to look back and think of if we see a disparity, discrepancy that wide in other areas of engagement. I don't think that we really do. I can't think of anything off the top of my head where there's such a gender disparity.
We used to have certain courses that way, if that's improved, when you think of technology engineering was slanted the other way.
Right.
Similar percentage, but that's, that's improved to almost fifty, fifty now.
Yeah.
Um, so it just maybe go along with education.
Yeah.
Some of it is nature versus nurture, just figuring out some people just don't, it's not in their nature, you know, so. I think we come, we, we think we do return to a lot because when we look at you all, I mean, this, you're doing a service. Like this is your passion, right? And you're involved in many things. So I know we have good discussions because that's at your core. Graduation?
Yeah, let's do it.
Um, graduation rates are still pretty consistent. Um, you probably think, gosh, why aren't we closer to a hundred percent? Part of this percentage, um, still includes our students who are in our eighteen plus program. And we have six students, that's part of the percentage. Um, so each year, um, outside of that, we do have typically one to two students who do not make that graduation law or who do not get a diploma. So we did have two this year. Again, one student came to us senior year, um, so did a lot of work to try and get him back on track. Um, just it, it wasn't, it didn't work for him. Um, and then we had another student, we, we were working with, we offer Operation Fresh Start, you go to many parent meetings. Um, and he preferred to work instead of, he wanted to make money instead of coming to school. That was what their family needed. So, uh, while it does ninety-four percent, um, truly is probably closer to that ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. If we don't have that transition piece, um, but when we pull our state data, it does include the students who are in eighteen plus program because they're technically not ended in infinite campus. So just a note there. Along with the graduation, we have attendance and our, our board goal, one of our goals was to get to, to, to be at or higher than ninety-five percent. We're teetering. We are right there. The district average is at ninety-four point five. And you can see the state trends, the five year trends versus Mount Horeb in the bar graph. But when you break it down on the next page, oh, keep going, Steve. We'll go to the next page and I can come back up.
Keep it going down further?
Yep, to the, yeah, grade level. Um, you can see by, by grade level how our grades are doing each year over the past seven years. We did put an average column in this, um, into this report. So you can see on average over those seven years, which grade levels are hitting that ninety-five percent threshold and which maybe aren't. We could look at cohorts too. We just haven't done that yet, but you can go diagonally down to see if any cohorts are sticking out. But, um, we're right there. We are right there. And we'll keep going with our attendance campaigns, calling families, keeping infinite campus going, all those kinds of things. Just to educate families and make sure they're in the know. On the previous page where, where Steve was, um, we just added on our students who are chronically absent. Um, overall for our school districts, what, what percent? And then, um, looking at, at by grade level as well. So that's a newer piece. Um, we can see a decline since COVID. Um, I removed actually like a couple of years prior because we were up in like the twenties, thirties, forties. And that just didn't seem relevant anymore. But now that we're pulling out and stabilizing, um, you can see that the percent of students who are chronically absent has, has decreased. That is our, our report for those life indicators related to creating citizens.
Any questions for Sarah?
Silver cord. Keep at it.
Well, thanks for all you do to keep it going.
Yeah, thank you all for your time.
I, I love seeing that the number's up this year.
Yeah. Well, keep at it.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Dr. Slerno, appears we have our, uh, our guest speaker on.
We sure do. Hey, Mark, how are you? We'll just have you, Mark, uh, if you could please, uh, unmute yourself. And then what I'll do is I'll see if I can't turn up our sound. Can you say a few words just first so I can make sure I have the sound correct? Excellent. And.
Beautiful day.
It is. We had a little bit of rain here today, but, um, hopefully we got that out of the way for the week. I'm gonna go ahead and record this, if that's okay. We like to put this on our, on our website. Well, uh, board members, here is a, a gentleman who's just been a wonderful resource, uh, to our school district over the course of the past number of months as we've transitioned to, um, uh, working with Bray. Uh, this is Mr. Mark Miller. Mark has, um, been just a great, great addition to our building design team. Uh, he is pinch hitting tonight for Ryan, uh, as Ryan is on some well-deserved vacation time. Do they let you have vacation, Mark?
No.
Oh, well, we'll talk to someone about that for you. But, uh, nonetheless, everyone, I'm pleased to introduce you to a, a new friend to the school district, Mr. Mark Miller. And Mark, you've got some updates for us, don't you?
Yes, uh, I'm gonna try sharing my screen and see if that works, huh?
Terrific. And if not, I'm happy to post it.
We'll give it a try.
There we go. That looks great.
All right. Everybody see that okay?
We sure can.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you for inviting me tonight. Uh, it's been a fun project so far. It's been enjoyable working with all the different folks in the district. And, uh, we will continue having fun, right? So I think you've seen these schedules before. Uh, we're just progressing through the schedule. I think we're, uh, currently up to date, uh, project wise. In one respect, we're a touch ahead in that some of those district, district-wide improvements with re-roofing and, uh, some of the restroom work over at the middle school, we've got a, a jump on that, getting started on that. And, uh, the primary center is moving right along. So, uh, design schedule, we're still in design development. We'll, we'll be wrapping that up here, uh, the end of June. So I think we're getting a lot of, of, uh, work done and it's been positive. Uh, staff engagement, we've had multiple meetings. Uh, we've had user, we call them user group meetings. Try to speak to individuals about, uh, the needs of, uh, their classrooms and the departments and, uh, such. We've spoken with kindergarten speech, math intervention, special education, athletics administration, health, library, kitchen, reading intervention, music. Uh, and they've all been very nice, very generous in their time and, and the suggestions and comments. And it's been very helpful and, uh, we are enjoying that partnership. And we'll be continuing this, uh, over the summer, a little less, but, uh, still some over the summer. And then again, uh, this fall, once school gets back into session. Uh, budget, uh, is proceeding, I think, uh, in the direction that we've got laid out. We're, we're still, uh, following along with that budget. Uh, we are going to be taking some alternate pricing options. Uh, to give us a little more flexibility, we'll ask the contractors for additive alternates and, uh, all have a different number, alternate number one, uh, alternate number two. And it gives us some flexibility, uh, in putting together the final price. So we'll be, uh, adjusting those as we, uh, get through the summer. Uh, primary center, uh, update, uh, we've been, uh, working on that and had a discussion with the village, uh, this past week. And that went very well, I think. Uh, they had some tips. They are looking at redoing their zoning ordinance. So that will, uh, take place hopefully this fall. Uh, we are having a preliminary presentation, the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission at the end of July. I think it's the twenty-third of July. And the city staff thought it might be good, since this is a, a large project magnitude wise, uh, to ease the two commissions into it. So we will be presenting a preliminary information, uh, at the end of July. And then we'll have the final summit later this fall. Sign up date, um, we, the basic concept, I think, has stayed the same, but we're refining the details. So we've got our, our parent drop off loop, our parking. Uh, we've had some discussions with the district staff on the number of parking spaces. And I think this is gonna get adjusted upward a little bit. I think we're trying to get the exact number. We wanna have, make sure we have enough parking for those day-to-day activities. Uh, but on the other hand, we don't wanna have additional parking that never gets used except for those one or two events a year. Uh, it's expensive to install, uh, that excess parking. It's expensive to maintain. And it also hinders us with our stormwater runoff, stormwater management and stormwater clarity. So, uh, we wanna make sure we get the right amount of parking that gets used on a regular basis. And, uh, we are going to be continuing to work through that. But I think that, uh, basic layout has stayed the same. It works very well. We've got our bus drop off along the north side. Uh, pulls up closer to the playground area. Uh, we are having our, our existing parking. Hard surface will become playground and we'll be having a soft surface playground area in the south. Uh, we have been, uh, starting conversations about playgrounds and it, that always gets people excited and, and it's kinda fun. Because playgrounds are just, they're just fun. Uh, the floor plan really hasn't changed a whole lot. Uh, we are working through details. One thing that has changed a little bit is the cafeteria kitchen. Uh, we've got our individual toilet rooms along the east side of the room now, the existing gym. And then we've got entrance for the serving, uh, this area, uh, from the hallway. So the kids will, uh, come from their classrooms, uh, into this hallway, uh, into the server room, pick up their food selections and then come out to the cafeteria. And the rest of the kitchen layout is along that north side. Um, we've got our kitchen consult, Brett's been working on the detailed layout of this. And hopefully we'll get something here from him, uh, this week or next week. We'll get back with Michelle and the other district folks, uh, on that kitchen layout. Uh, we've also been working on construction details, uh, what kinds of walls. Uh, we've gone through, uh, with, with the folks on what kinds of things we wanna see, wall heights. Uh, concrete block, uh, both from a, a structural standpoint and, and from a finish standpoint and durability standpoint. Metal stud walls with, uh, use resistant sheet rock, uh, gypsum board. And, uh, I think we've got that fairly well nailed, nailed down now, but, uh, it's been a little bit of back and forth on that. Uh, this past week, we also had our preliminary interior design presentation. And, uh, we've got, uh, a conversation went through, uh, with Melissa from our office on material types, uh, what the durability of those materials are, the ease of maintenance, lifecycle costs. Uh, those are all important, uh, items that need to be balanced, uh, fit with the district standards. Uh, talked about flooring, wall finishes, ceilings, cabinetry, countertops. And then those accents and enhancements that, that make it a, a fun and enjoyable, enjoyable building to be in as well. And we're working through that. We'll be having more conversations on interior finishes, uh, material types and colors. So. The exterior appearance hasn't changed too much. Uh, we're working on colors. We've got orders in for bricks. Uh, and we'll try to match the existing brick. One of the things that is, is, you can see in elevation here, we've got Mount Horeb School, uh, because we're not sure at, at the moment. But, uh, will the school have any name? Uh, stay with Mount Horeb Primary Center and Mount Horeb Elementary School? Other thoughts? Uh, we're not really looking for an answer, uh, now, but we, uh, are looking for people to start thinking about this. And we're welcoming feedback and, and how we want to approach, uh, the name of that school. Uh, since the early learning center will be disappearing down the road. So. Our next steps, we'll continue with our, uh, design development, interior or exterior design materials. We're getting samples pulled together so you can actually, uh, see what the materials feel like and look like. We had some, uh, this past week. We'll be getting more of those. Uh, continuing to engage with our engineers and consultants. Uh, I mentioned, uh, the kitchen consult, but we're also, uh, coming out Wednesday, uh, and having a walkthrough with the MEP folks and the structural engineers. They're going to be looking at the existing, uh, building and, and construction pieces and, and how we're going to extend and expand that. And then, uh, also discussing the HVAC systems, uh, how we're going to approach that expanded geothermal system. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll be having additional user group meetings, uh, sporadically across the summer. But, uh, uh, definitely more as, uh, school year starts back up. So. Any questions?
Well, it sounds like you've done such a great job with your presentation that you've left them speechless, Mark.
I tell you, I'm pretty excited from my perspective.
Well, it is exciting. You've done a great deal of work. Thank you to your team. Uh, last Thursday's building design team meeting, as you may have seen in my weekly update, was quite a breakthrough, uh, meeting. Uh, got a lot accomplished. Uh, as a result of there being a number of people who are gonna be on vacation, the team is elected to forego their meeting on, well, that would be June twenty-sixth-ish. And we'll, we'll come back again in, uh, first week of July. Uh, these are meetings that are open to the public. Uh, and we have them either virtually or in person and we'll always post those meetings. And we'll also make this video, uh, available on our district's website, uh, so that people, if they are interested in doing a deep dive, they certainly can do that. I end where I began, Mark, and that's in gratitude to you and your team. Thank you for your continued partnership and we look forward to seeing you on Wednesday morning. Sounds like ten o'clock in the morning is the cemented time.
Yep, ten o'clock, I'll be there.
All right, my friend. Onward, upward we travel.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a couple of information and advocacy reports from Mr. Brian Johnson. Improving the practice and policies related to school safety and improving confidence and knowledge of school safety.
Yeah, so this is kind of put into one document. And so let's just kind of go through it. Um, you know, when you think of, of kind of the introduction itself, right? Um, when you talk about school safety, you're really talking about two pieces that aren't directly talked about in here. But the part of well-being and belonging and all of the pieces, right, that also are a critical part of school safety, um, aren't overtly mentioned in this, in this, um, document. This is more on the physical safety side of the house. Um, also acknowledging that things have really changed or, um, we've kind of taken a year of not being able to change our policies and practices. Um, and so, um, because of May first, um, we've had to look at things differently and different perspectives. And, um, it's kind of changed the way we've looked at it. And so that's, um, kind of a revamp in a lot of ways as well. So. When we go right into improvement of practices and policies, um, really we've kept the actual plans the same. So those are the same, um, but how we do them are different. Um, if you remember this year, all of our incidences and our monthly drills that we do, parents were given notice, um, before they occurred. Um, Chief Eric and Officer Rosemeyer came once a month to every admin, uh, administrative council, ran scenarios and practices. And then, um, they got to hear our answers on how we would handle. Um, you know, they kind of do like a scenario like, here's step one, this happens, how do you react? Step two, how do you react? And gone through it. So they're learning from us, but then we're also learning from them like, well, how do you want us? Like, when, when should we be taking it serious at step two, step three, right? Um, and get them involved. And so those are, have really been equally beneficial and important for us to kind of refine and really take seriously, um, as an administrative council. This year, we also had our community safety review task force, which two of you were on. And the task force recent, uh, presented to the full board, looking at the physicality of our buildings, um, doing, taking the studies and the observations that, um, David Melby, um, did. And then, um, we looked at those and then we took tours of the buildings and looked at it and talked to the principals. And they're like, well, how do you see this working? How does it play out? And then how can we, uh, make it better? And so that was kind of what we continued to look at. And then also just kind of overall district leadership, um, it's really changed and really taking the experiences that we had as a community. Um, and all of us have played a role in supporting a different district at some point, right? Um, whether that's another school board member calling and asking for advice, uh, whether it's presenting at WSB conference, um, whether it's, you know, Stephen Aubrey presented to Belleville School District, you know, and we've had different people. I know Paul Christensen just met with principals and we shared all of our resources with them too. So it's that continuously learning and helping support, um, which has really been important for us, um, moving forward.
May I interrupt there real quick? It should not go unnoticed the extraordinary work and support you provided to our friends in Madison this past December. Just hours after that incident occurred, here's Brian going down there to help out, um, and offering support. And I heard from more than one person, uh, down there, just how appreciative they were of your leadership. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, it's the power of taking the experiences that we've had and helping somebody else, right? And that gives us power, um, with what we've gone through and helping somebody else. And so I think there's a lot of power in being able to do that as well. Um, when we look at kind of the second piece, which is improving our confidence and knowledge, um, what are we kind of doing to always get better? Right? And so, um, we're always looking at what ways to be preventative. Um, we're also really focusing on our Speak Up, Speak Out, um, training, supporting, making sure that staff, students feel safe calling. We've also had the people from Speak Up, Speak Out who are running the system come to our admin council, like how do we make it better? Um, how, and, and our feedback is that, like, we'll give two pieces of information, right? And then the, the student hangs up or the parent hangs up and we can't get a follow-up. And so can they like give a warning, like somebody's gonna, a real person really is here. They're about to join you to ask a follow-up question. Um, and so if we can get some of that, we can do more with it. But if we have two pieces of information and we don't know who this, like anything else, it's really hard for us to investigate without a full picture. And so that's what we've been working with Speak Up, Speak Out and our administrators have been on really being able to have a better system.
In fact, we're making a video, thanks to Aubrey's good work, in which Officer Rosemeyer will walk a student through how to use the service and to stay on the call or stay online, uh, when doing the reporting so that we can gather as much information as possible while respecting the anonymity of the process.
So we wanna go down a little bit further. We're really continuing to do staff training, um, and have that, that partnership. Talked about the safety drills, um, our monthly drills, um, we're continuing to look at secondary locations, um, our reunification location, all of those pieces, just making them better, uh, from what we learned. We talked a little bit about this within our last, um, Safety and Wellness Committee, but next year we will be starting Visitor Aware, which is the identification system that somebody will be able to show their driver's license. It'll run a, a full wide national sex offender registry, go through it. It'll take your picture. You'll get the name badge printed out. So it really kind of. So it really kind of has a more robust system for all of our schools and all of the 4K sites within the community. So this is a great partnership that we're excited about and just making us one step better. And then, you know, part of that is, is we've gotten generous donations and part of that is through the Kerth family that have focused on additional cameras pointed towards exterior doorways throughout the district. So that way it has, we've had a lot of discussions about what AI, can it see different features? Can it see different areas? And we know we're not there, it's not there yet, but the yet is really important. And so what systems do we have in place and what procedures so that when it is up to par, that we're ready to go? And having the exterior cameras pointed at all of the exterior doors and parking lots is a big step forward for that. So we thank them for their, their continued commitment. And then two pieces of important data pulled together for the YRBS of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. There's a question at students who feel safe in school. And so looking at this kind of more long-term, blue is middle school and green is high school, but we're at 89 and then in 2022, 23, it dropped, but we'll continue to look at that and then bring, you know, how did that change after May 1st as well? So we are kind of continuing to see that from a student level, that their level of safety has decreased a little bit. And then the student, the staff well-being survey, you've seen this slide before, but just kind of put it in this document as well, kind of the surprise that after May 1st, I feel physically safe in the school and work environment did increase a little bit. And so that's kind of a good feeling about what we've put in place has been effective as well. So just kind of looking at it as long-term from a student perspective as well as a staff perspective and what can we do to kind of continually look at that and make it, make it better?
And can you remind me on the timing of that YRBS? And I know the middle school is the one that lags, right? But the high school one has been, you've gotten decent turnaround on that?
Decent turnaround, yeah. So that's the latest document that we have was 21, 20, or 22, 23?
23, yeah.
22, 23 school year. We just did it again this year and so we'll be able to pull that data pretty soon. We haven't got last year's state county youth risk survey results back yet, but those should be anytime. We're, it's always a year behind. So again, it's hard to do anything with it, but it's nice to look at it when you can start looking at it longitud.
Yep.
We've been thinking about running that through our own district procedure, maybe using Survey Monkey or some other system so that we get instantaneous data feedback and then we can report it back to them and we're not waiting. So we're working on that as a summer project.
Cool. Yeah, students ask the questions if we can flip it.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, the lie, the lie is that we only just got that 22.
Yeah, like.
Like last month.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It's hard.
These are 10th graders now.
Yes.
Wow.
So is the Visitor Aware system that we're putting in, is that one that's used by other neighboring schools? Cause I know quite a few of them have that printout, is it the same?
Every, a lot of districts use a version of it, but the Visitor Aware is used in quite a few.
Oregon school districts, the one that we went and visited, and it's pretty well received. We encourage people to, even before they have a planned visit, to go ahead and just load it into the system so that way it's instantaneous.
Oh, it works great.
Well, yeah, I hope so.
It's actually, every time.
Have you used it? Okay, great.
It's been, it's been super easy to use.
Lovely. It's nice to hear.
I just wasn't sure if that's.
Yeah, and it's a local company, which also helps in some of your, like if we need, have a need, they can respond quicker.
Other than the sticker sticks to golf shirts and you can't get it off, so you gotta go home and scrub it out.
Don't put it on a leather coat.
Yeah, put it, put it on your portfolio.
I appreciate the emphasis on yet, on the AI stuff. I just, it's gonna take me, I think, a bit to come around to not being so skeptical of it, right? Cause I think it's not, the, the applications that I see it in use every day are ones where, yes, it can be helpful and it give you good information, but it also requires you have a level of professional knowledge to verify the information you're getting is actually accurate, right? Because it hallucinates, it does. So yes, it is not there yet, I think, as an industry, but perhaps there's future potentials.
We saw that with the Nashville shooting here this past winter, that they had the system for AI that overlapped with their cameras and it didn't work. And you could visibly see the weaponry as the kid was coming in. And so rather than invest and be a guinea pig, we'd rather make sure it's perfected.
Well, and I imagine you can hide something in a.
Absolutely.
Large instrument case, right? Like, so it has any camera, let-based system is gonna have some limits naturally.
And I think I've heard Dr. Slerner say it many times too, right? Like we, part of being, having a secure school is not giving people a false sense of what we, what we have and what we can provide. And so sometimes then when you have like, we have this AI system and you're like, it'll prevent everything, it will not.
Right.
And so it really is limited and so you don't wanna, you don't wanna false, give false hope to what we have, cause these are what we have and we have a really good system. But let's not pretend we have a lot.
Right.
So we have a lot of information on school shooting, things like that, obviously because of recent events and all that kind of stuff. Is there any other safety protocols that we've needed to update? The fire safety protocols, anything like that that aren't included here? I mean, I know those systems have been around for a long, long time and work well, but is there anything that we've done?
No, it's all really the same. And so when you look at the evacuate portion of the, it's like the run, hide, fight, and then the evacuate, it's all the same. And so in terms of when we do the monthly drills, we, it used to, you know, five years ago, it was fire drill every month and now it is a little bit different. Sometimes they're critical incidents, sometimes they're, they can be chemical spills, they can be different things that get looked at from the same perspective and they're all on that one sheet document.
I appreciate your question because there are some things from a material perspective that I think we're working to adjust. Use the example of keeping doors locked to every classroom and having those rubber stoppers so that if we had to go into a lockdown internal to the organization, it's something as simple as just pulling the rubber stopper and then closing the door. And Mr. and Mrs. Kerth have been kind enough to use some of that $100,000 to help us offset that. We continue to look at other kinds of things from a material perspective, grant writing. You may have seen in my weekly update, the COPS grant that Aubrey has just done an exceptional job in, in writing, and partnering with community members in writing that, by the way, that we want to be able to enhance further some other options that, you know, we kind of keep behind the scenes a little bit so as not to create some excitement or awareness for people. But thanks for asking that question.
I mean, I didn't notice the Ben Franklin protocol where we fly kites during tornadoes, so I think we're good.
That's right. Just checking.
One question about cameras and placement without getting into specifics or anything, just on our vision. I feel like I've heard us talk a little bit about this too, about, you know, not just on the buildings themselves, but the property that we're on. First, so you can spot things further off, but second, in areas that we don't have visibility into, is that, am I thinking about that right in terms of our approach?
Yes, in fact, that was a topic of a great deal of conversation from the safety review task force. I use the example of the tree line here out at the, at the middle school. When it's bright out, it's a nice day, you know, you can, you can make out people, but when it's the evening time, we'd like to be able to up the pixelation, if you will, of the cameras up. And that requires, I think, a little more money to get that night view, if you will. So those little kinds of things that will evolve too. Right now, the priority is doors and windows and then we suspect that as the technology improves, the price will come down a little bit and we can leverage our savings that way and purchase it. But yes, you're exactly right. I, Carly or Leah, who were instrumental to the success of that task force, other reflections there?
I mean, it was cool Paul showed us, like he could bring it up and show us what he could see right then and it was a bright sunny day and he's like, so I can see pretty well. But he brought up the same point, like if it's raining or cloudy, you can be like, there is someone there, but you know, what color shirt are they wearing?
Right.
Dark, you know, light. But I was actually surprised at how much you could actually see. Every time I walked by, I kind of waved. I know you guys see me on a camera somewhere. So, but it is, it is cool. I mean, they can pull it up on their phone, but there, there were a few call-ups that they had, like it would be nice if we had, like you could see, but it'd be nice if you could see just a little bit more over here and things like that when we were kind of going through.
We don't run into any privacy concerns with neighbors or anything on any of that stuff, do we?
No, because we don't have them aimed at like the homes across the street. We do have signs up throughout the facilities, you're under surveillance or the property's under surveillance, like pickleball area and stuff.
Okay.
This is great. Thank you so very much. Don't go too far yet, cause where has it? You get to have a policy.
Yeah, second reading, right?
Yeah, it is. It is second reading.
It's three sentences now though.
I've been looking at that.
Are we gonna juice it up a little bit here?
It's ready to action. Item 7A, second reading, board policy, 493, student valuables.
Yeah, so second reading, the first reading, we decided to change the first sentence into two separate sentences so that they're more concrete. Students are responsible, school district is not for people's personal property. And then we changed out, do not leave valuables or money in your lock key cover area and ain't attended area.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion by Leah and a second by Jessica. Any further discussion? All right, otherwise I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one opposed, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. 7B is considering the budgeted purchase of Chromebooks for the 25, 26 school year. Dr. Slerner?
Yeah, thank you again, board members, for the opportunity and to the community for allowing us to even be in this position as part of our replacement plan in which we annually refresh at various grade levels, our Chromebook purchases. You will see a recommendation for, I'll make that bigger, for this school year. Trafara is an outfit that we bought Chromebooks with before and you may remember that as part of that relationship with Trafara, we also have staff ability to monitor students' Chromebook. Also have an extended warranty through Trafara. And so that's why we selected Trafara as opposed to CDWG, which was also the same price. Quite frankly, this is about 80 Chromebooks purchased, excuse me, I stand corrected. No, it is 80. I beg your pardon, 80 Chromebooks. And we took advantage of some sales in January out of fear that tariffs would have caused us to pay even more. And so I'm pleased to tell you that if the board were to approve this here tonight, we will have met our requirement for meeting our, our replacement plan structure. We'd ask if the board would please consider approving this purchase.
Dr. Slerner, could you refresh me again on what you're talking about in terms of monitoring, like the capabilities that you mentioned?
Yeah, yeah. So if a student is in class and they're not necessarily on the right page in the Chromebook, we help them find their way to the right page.
I've heard about this.
I've never heard about this at all.
A little coaching gets done. We move away from Minecraft, though they can't get it Minecraft, I've just used playful, but yeah, help them think about math.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for that, board members. And then also part of that refresh and replacement plan has to do with surface tablets. And you might recall that in order for our teachers to take advantage of allowing students' work to be displayed on the big screen monitors in the classrooms, they use surface tablets. And they might even hand a surface tablet to a student, say, hey, work this problem for us so that all the students can see it being done on the television monitor. This is a tool that our teachers have come to really enjoy and appreciate. We are going to be refreshing tablets, I believe it was in the sixth grade and the ninth grade, I could be wrong about this, but.
By building?
Please take it.
By building?
Yes, by building, we're doing that, but there are certain buildings that were on, on the docket for this year and I can double check that and get back with you. But this is a technology that's very helpful, but it's also evolving. And so in order to take advantage of some pricing, favorable pricing, and because the model that we like to use is no longer going to be created after this year, we want to keep everybody on the same tablet for, for now, so it's easier for our team if something goes wrong to fix them. Two of the outfits, Ampro and Second Gear, they just didn't have any stock because again, it's a, it's a, it's a version, if you will, it's no longer readily available, but CDWG will get that for us. We're asking for your consideration. We'll have to look at another tablet once we get down into the next cycle in a couple of years.
What's the, what's the shelf life on those? What are you trying to get on?
Our replacement cycle's about four to five years on that, just like our Chromebooks.
My notes say this was 90 units.
90 units, thank you. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Thanks, Tom.
Service fee for the purchase.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Carly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Do you have space for citizen comments? If any of the citizens in attendance want to weigh in at this point? Otherwise, we want to contemplate closed session per section 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Rule call vote? Joel?
Yes.
Actually, do I need a motion first?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Jessica. Now the rule call vote.
I'm gonna change my vote.
Careful. Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Let's take, you need to take five minutes?
That's terrific.